I don't think it's that long.
Oh, sorry, it was all the order. We already have had our call to order and approved the agenda. So we're just going to go through the agenda. I did want to call out that. Uh, I don't know if we have Councilman Bueller online yet, but he's trying to log in. Councilman Shuddy is excused. He is currently in the hospital. Um, having some tests done. Uh, he's very sick over something, but we, they're trying to figure out what it is. So that is explaining why who is here is here. And I would like to start off by introducing the Corps of Engineers. I, I will go and ask you to introduce yourself to the entire crowd. So.
Drew. Hi, I'm Drew Meyer. I'm the Chief of Planning with the O'Mahon District. Uh, the planning branch is in charge of overseeing uh our feasibility study, including this one with the city of uh of Watertown. Uh, I got a, a, a staff here to kind of talk about the project today.
Afternoon. Greg Johnson, I'm the Chief of the Plant Formulation Project Management Section. I work in one of the sections of the Drew's branch. I'm a hydraulic engineer by training. I supervise a group of project managers that oversee projects like this.
Joe Holcomb, hydraulic engineer with the flooders flooding management section on the Corps of Engineers. I'm the technical lead for the study.
Sarah Melder, um, the project manager and the planner for the study.
And I would like to, and Sarah will take the presentation, I believe, won't you? And Director Von I, did you want to preface the conversation with anything? I've, council has just gotten done talking to the Corps for over two hours, in part because we have a contract with them. They have been paying our part in their conducting of a study to try to get to a, to address the flooding in Watertown. So Watertown had agreed on that. We had expended money to urge them to go forward to investigate and they're coming, they came back to us. And then we were talking about the contract and how we might proceed, but uh, this is the public information aspect of it. So this is another. Or he, sorry. Oh, it's great introduction. That's a further for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna say, so uh, you know, we kicked out this study, I believe, in late twenty twenty-two. We had a initial public meeting in January of twenty-three, kind of got input on, under the study and some of the alternatives that we're gonna look at. Uh, we're getting very close to what we call identifying a tentatively selected plan. And kind of came out to breathe the city council earlier today, where we're at. Uh, once uh, once we've kind of vetted that, you know, kind of got alignment with our, with our sponsor, the city of Watertown, got alignment with our uh, what we call our vertical team, like kind of our headquarters. Uh, and what we think the tentatively selected plan would be, then we released a draft report uh that is targeted for uh uh, uh, or, or late summer and uh you know, we'll come up and have another, another public meeting on, on that recommended plan. Uh, but since we're up here, we also wanted to brief the public on, you know, about where we're at today. We're, we're a little limited on what we can share just because of uh, you know, we don't have that, that vertical alignment yet. But Sarah's gonna walk you, walk us through uh what we've done to date, what we're looking at and kind of the schedule. I don't know. Now, I'll open it up the sound.
And Ms. Miller, did you want, I know that there's a couple of people in the audience that might have some questions. Did you want them to wait for the end? Or?
I think the end would be good. Um, I'm sorry, I don't know why it won't show. Whenever I go to presentation mode, it's not showing. So I'm just gonna have to scroll through this way. Um, I'm not sure what the issue is, but um. Everyone has gone through all the interviews. So um, I just have a couple of slides, just kind of wanna run through like a background of kind of telling the whole story of how we've gotten to where we're at. Um, and then I'm happy to answer questions at the end. Um. So really, we kicked off this meeting. Um, or kicked out this study back in um, kind of around May of twenty twenty-two. Um, we came up and then we discussed the study and the goals, the initial goals um with the city and the council. Um, and one of the main drivers was to look at something that's um implementable. So um, I'm sure everyone is aware, we've done the study several times. Um, you know, starting back in the nineties. Um, and so, you know, the question has been recurring, you know, why, how's the study gonna be any different? Um, what different things are you gonna consider? What are you gonna look at? Uh, and so that was in, that was one of our main focuses too, as we got started. Um, we also held a couple of meetings in the beginning, um, starting in October twenty twenty-two. Um, we've met because um the previous studies had recommended um a dry dam at the confluence of Mahoney Creek and uh Big Sioux River. Um, we thought it would be good to meet with those landowners that would be impacted by that dry dam. Um, and get their input, um, especially since it had been twenty, thirty years. Um, we also had a public scoping meeting um back in January of twenty twenty-three. Again, to kind of go over initial objectives and goals and get um the public's feedback. Um, there's a graphic that kind of illustrates where some of the focal points of what kind of feedback we got. Um, some of it started with, you know, like the scope, uh, how did we come up with a study boundary? Um, were we gonna look at, you know, up north and include um, you know, the lakes around Wa Bay? Um, also strong feelings of um, Mahoney Creek Dry Dam came up. Um, the, you know, looking at how, you know, that, if we built that dry dam um, north of the city, then people north of the city wouldn't necessarily get benefits from that dry dam. Um, then there was also concerns on, you know, since we're looking at protection within the city. There were concerns with, you know, um, where there's been footplank development. Um, looking at that risk and then also questions on funding. So. In addition to that, we also mailed out um postcards um that, you know, had a couple of questions on them, just general, just to get people's feedback again. Um, it kind of mirrored what we got back at the public meetings, which was that, you know, a lot of, a big focus was how can we lower insurance premiums? Um, also making sure we consider nature, nature and wildlife. And then um, you know, some of the people responded that they were somewhat concerned with the study. Um, most people were, well, thirty percent felt neutral about it. And then um, you know, looking at how this potential study could impact their um property. So um, what I kind of wanted to do was probably wondering what we've been doing then over the last year and a half. Um, it starts really with the hydrology and figuring out, you know, how much mo, or how much water, how to model it, where that data's gonna go. And then that feeds into our hydraulic model, which then feeds into our um initial economic analysis. And what we call the stage is existing conditions. So just trying to figure out what exactly is going on. Um. We realized that there have been models done um previously. Um, we did initiate some coordination with them and uh was being respect and um basically looking at how um our policies and, and what we require in a model and what the existing model um how that functions and trying to look at what is the most timely, just cost-effective um, you know, solution. And that was to basically develop our own model. But we did utilize their model in ways of, we compared our model once it was um built to their model to make sure that, you know, we were getting same numbers or similar um outputs. Um, especially on flood events. So the map um on the right just shows uh, you know, specifically gauge data that we use, stream gauge data to um that we use to input into our model. Um, and that, you know, went into our hydraulic analysis and formulating, you know, where, what all areas are getting impacted during flood events. Um, so then, like I said, um, all of that hydrology and hydraulic modeling, that feeds into our economic analysis. Um, so we're trying to figure out, you know, how many structures um and different uh, you know, other things that, you know, kind of costs basically are getting um damaged during these flood events. So uh, we had a total number of about seventy-nine hundred structures um in our inventory that valued over just one point nine billion um within our study area. Um. That could be impacted uh by um, we looked at a bigger event, so like a five hundred year or uh like two percent or point two percent um, you know, exceedance um probability. So um, that map in the corner um shows the outline of the five hundred year event and what would be impacted. Um, so then we also looked at that annually, um, we would estimate there would be approximately three million damages. Um, when we looked at the damages, the structures, we divided them into different categories. Uh, this include uh industrial, commercial, public, automobiles. Um, we even included emergency cleanup, because we know that during flood events, obviously, there's possibly being suspended. And then we also look at residential. Um, residential uh had the largest proportion of damages when you compare it to the other categories of structures. So um, this map kind of also illustrates that point as well with the residential structures. Um, this is a heat map that shows the um level of damages, so darker blue are damages by death. Um, at the hundred year event. And we have uh a focus on both Lake Compesca and then um the rest of the city. Um, which you can see that uh is highlighted near highway two twelve um and east of the river, where there's a lot of um board damages, especially during a hundred year event. So all of this kind of factors into our um development of alternatives and where we're gonna go with the study. Uh, one more thing to take into account too, um, is where are all the critical facilities, you know, in addition to residential um, uh structures that are getting impacted. So um, this again is showing a five hundred year event. And um, and I guess it might help for reference. Um, I know I'm not a mini-narrator, but your, the, the ninety-seven flood, just for a reference, that, that was around a fifty-year event. So if that kind of gives reference on comparing things. So um, but this five hundred year event, um, there's three um three structures that would be inundated, but we also noted that obviously crossings, which um make it, you know, difficult to get to a lot of each of these. Um, so with all that preliminary data and what we've been doing for the last year, um. This is our list of alternatives. Um, so I'm gonna kind of generally go through each one. Um, kind of like we said, this is just a um higher level um update. And then, you know, the draft report will come in the middle of September um with much more detail, but. So um first is no action. That's our starting point. That's where we have to compare everything to. Um, and then you can kind of see that lowering Lake Compesca to an elevation of seventeen eighteen is combined with all of these alternatives. So what that means and what we're looking at is there's a weirder structure that um, you know, is near where the river goes in and out. Um, what we are proposing is that uh in the fall or winter, we would remove um the stoplogs and as long as it was above um seventeen eighteen. So normally flood pool, like the high elevation is seventeen eighteen point eight. So we would propose to remove those to lower it to seventeen eight. So that's point eight or eight tenths of a, a foot. And we would do that in the fall, uh lightfall, to allow for uh spring runoff and and possible flood events in the spring or early summer. Um, you know, when we ran the numbers um initially and, and looked at the benefits. Um, when we do that, the lake stores about three thousand CFS. And so in combination uh with different levy um alternatives and possibly channel widening. Um, that's when we were able to get protection um for the rest of the city to, protection to um hundred-year events in some cases, and even more. So um, again, kind of looking at, um, you know, using the data that I kind of went over before. Um, we looked at lowering the lake and constructing only a left bank levy. And I guess I should preface this too. This is looking downstream when you're talking left and right. Um, we also looked at um channel widening in combination with that. Um, channel widening, lowering lake and left and right banks. And when we um, looking at this one in particular, uh the height of the levees um would be lower so that we wouldn't have to construct um closure structures. Closure structures, meaning that's kind of what fills the gaps on the roadway crossings. Um, and so, you know, when you build things like that, that's also gonna drive up costs, but you get the protection. So um, that's what a lot of this list is, is just kind of weighing out pros and cons and trying to look at different ways that we can provide protection and looking at cost. Um, so we did look at also lowering the lake plus channel widening and um instructing the levees much higher to where you would need a four-foot closure structure on these road crossings. Um, and then we uh, what eleven A, eleven B, eleven C is, those are all lowering the lake, left and right bank levees. Um, no channel widening and um just different heights of the um levees. And eleven B and eleven C would be um protection to the hundred-year event. And then eleven C is protection to the hundred-year event plus one foot. And then we also look at just lowering the lake, just to also have a um comparison, because um, you know, right now there would be no costs tied to that other than um O and M, but there, you know, construction, because we utilize studies. So um, and well, and I guess on channel widening, what we really looked, what we looked at was um possibly widening the channel, you know, up to fifty feet on either side of what it is. And then um digging or lowering the center of the um channel as well. Um, so um, kind of wanted also then give you like a rough schedule or what our next steps are now that we have this final grade of alternatives. Um, so we came up to meet with the city um and present to you. And uh, our next week meeting is July eighth, where we meet with our leadership and review the tentatively selected plan. So what plan that, you know, um, is the most economically justified. Um, and then in middle of September, that's our plan to release the draft report for public and um agency review. And then um, over the next, oh, just less than a year, um we'll be taking it, you know, looking at the comments, uh giving feedbacks to the um alternatives, going through a risk assessment. Um, and then next June, that's when we would start finalizing our recommended plan. And um, and then July twenty twenty-five, we would release it for uh, for another final review. And then um, you know, I can probably notice this big gap, but in November, that's when we would submit our report up to, again, the folks in DC for their review. Um, and normally that can take up to six months for them to approve that project or study. And then if they do approve it, the next um thing would be to um, you know, go into design and then construction. Um, but it will be challenging to figure out when that exactly will happen, because um because when we um put the project in, that has to get approved and approved for funding and then has to be funded through um Water Resource Development Act, and those are generally put out on the even years. And, you know, we don't have a general's, we're not gonna know what Congress is gonna recommend, I guess, on that. So that can be kind of up in the air um on when we would know we'd get funding. Um, so with that, that's just kind of our general presentation. So I don't know if I have any, you have any questions?
So I'll open it up for questions, but I just ask that you identify yourself first. I know that there's, I think a third is. Are you here for the plane and not golf? Because Doug, I've seen you at late meetings, but not at, but not on Thursday at least. So, okay. So, okay, so if you have any questions, I just ask that you identify yourself and if you're representing anything, but go ahead and ask uh direct questions through me, but uh, Mr. Brad Johnson, if you'd like to.
Mr. Mayor Brad Johnson of Lake Compesca Water Project District. Um, the first question I have, you reclassified the ninety-seven event as a fifty-year flood event. Is that correct? That's what you said.
I did. I don't know if reclassify is, so I totally, yeah.
Truth, based off of today's hydrology update upstream look.
Okay, because the last, um, initially, the dam was proposed for a hundred-year event. That was your first report. And then this, then the ninety-seven and the two thousand and one events caused the Corps to reclassify that into about a ninety-year flood event. So then this, that report that came out after that said that the dam, if it were to be built, would have to be bigger, because now you were at a ninety-year event. So now you're going down to a fifty-year event. So you're dramatically increasing. And the flood insurance study that was done was based on poor information, and that was a hundred-year flood event through Watertown. So now you must be dramatically increasing the flood risk in Watertown with your new model.
Not necessarily, because we have twenty years of additional data can change the frequency plotting positions. So we're not necessarily increasing discharges related to the events. It's more just spoiler based on frequency.
But if, if that was only a fifty-year event, we know what a fifty, if you're, if you're calling that a fifty-year event, we know what a fifty-year event does to Watertown, if that's what they're saying. So now you're saying a hundred-year event, that would be more water, right? Quite a bit more.
More in, oh, terminus and more upstream of the lake. So depending on lake levels, more upstream, coming in from the Big Sioux and that.
So wouldn't that have impacts on FEMA and uh hundred-year flood risk in Watertown? If they're saying it's no longer a hundred-year event, wouldn't that, wouldn't your new model be taking in much more water town? From what I can see of that map, it did. So that puts a lot more water town into a hundred-year flood risk, right?
Not necessarily. FEMA uses different guidance.
But they rely on you, they did in the last study.
They did in one of the active studies.
The two thousand and seven one.
But the preliminary studies are going through processes and they're not always relying on.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I think that one, the city needs to really explore that. Um, on Lake Compesca, so you're pretty much writing off the lake. Because you're not gonna provide any level of flood protection for the lake other than eight inches, which lasts about twelve hours in a flood event, because the first day of the ninety-seven flood, the lake came up twelve inches. So basically, any of this study is just um through the city of Watertown. So you're gonna see how much water you can pour through the city as fast as possible, right? I mean, that's the effect of it. If you're gonna go up to a hundred-year flood event of passing water through Watertown, then, then basically, the lake is gonna take as much as it can, but you're gonna try to speed as much through town as possible.
Well, we look at how we pass the water through, but trying not to speed it up. And the reason I use that term is because if we speed it up, we cause downstream damage. We don't wanna do what our modeling is showing up or not. So not necessarily speeding up, just allowing the water to flow.
It flows through now, but you would flow it through faster.
Since we're not increasing downstream damages.
That's assets, you're not doing anything. Because you're not changing, you're not slowing the water down, and you're not speeding it up. So you're not doing anything. I mean, that's what this whole thing tells me. You're not, you're not providing any level of protection to the city, I mean, to the lake, which takes most of the water in a flood event. But now you are, you're talking about widening a channel, you're talking about increasing levees through town. That would be done, you know, either to just protect some residences or to speed water.
So the levees do help protect the community proper. You're right, but it doesn't.
Doesn't. But it's not going through any, any faster. You're just gonna have it deeper going through town.
I think that would be the better term. We're not gonna flow it faster, because we don't wanna increase downstream damages. It would be deeper within the channel and whatever levees that we have. So that would be deeper. But then during frequent events, even to the hundred-year, ideally, that water would be contained in the levees and not spill over smaller designs and current routes, anything like that, and flood additional properties.
So what was the reason? May I continue? I don't want to.
Actually, I just wanted to make one thing clear. Uh, if you're addressing the Corps, make sure it's in the form of a question, because you had branched off into basically making
Well, that's for questions.
Yeah, and, and, and I understand. That's why I was giving the leeway, but when you're talking to the Corps, and at the end, if you want to make a statement, I would allow that definitely. So go ahead.
Now, now I forgot my question. Um, but, but, oh yeah, the question is, what led you to decide to completely write off the concept of the Mahoney Creek Dam, which was was the conclusion of the Corps all along? What, what was your decision? And how you eliminated that from consideration?
Um, we have kind of categorized it in the three uh, brought like, I don't know. Like, there will, we will talk to it in the report more thoroughly, but generally, um, you know, it's outside of the city limits. So ability to acquire land um and eminent domain and, you know, how that would work out. Um, and, you know, um, then uh looking at uh, how does, you know, constructing a dam that impacts um, you know, reservation land.
There's no reservation land in there.
The dry dams within reservation um boundary. So we do need to coordinate with the tribe. Um, and, you know, they uh, did, you know, weren't receiving any benefits uh from the dry dam or the, you know, pool out um behind it. So looking at how that um compares with our federal and um, we say specific policies as far as uh tribal consultation and our environmental justice policies. And then uh also just um, you know, coordinating and um hearing feedback from uh the landowners um that were opposed to it.
Well, they've always, it's a statement.
It's a statement. But it's, how about you phrase it as, but haven't the upstream.
Yeah, yeah. Haven't, haven't, haven't the upstream, haven't the upstream, haven't they always been opposed? And that was part of the, that, that issue. That was an issue that was, wasn't that up to the city council? To decide whether, I mean, was it, isn't it the city council's decision whether to exercise eminent domain? Isn't it their political decision as to whether they move forward with something? But it seems like you're making a political decision. Makes it easy for them.
I mean, I fucking love you guys' answer that, heard of that. Um, you know, we also uh have look at that, you know, in ninety-four, when we finished the report, you know, Congress chose not to fund the project. Um.
Was the project ever completed? The order was, was your, was.
Our feasibility study.
It was not.
Yeah, it was a choose reported.
There's two things. The, when we finish a study, it ends in a chief report. The chief of engineers basically signs their report, sends it over to Congress to get authorized. Congress never actually authorized the report for, those two things. Congress has to authorize it, which they never did. Probably a large fraction of the political pullback that they got. And then they have to appropriate funding for it. So there's kind of two steps. Congress never actually took the first step. The city can pass a resolution. But the Congress never authorized it for instruction. The Corps cannot move forward either. So.
It, it was my understanding that the Corps had never completed all the archaeological studies. All of that type of stuff because they, because of the process. Uh, leading up to it, they needed to get that next step authorization from the city to move forward.
Well, I mean, the city and Congress would both have to move forward. Even the city moved forward, Congress did. Then that kind of hamstrings the Corps' ability to move forward. I, I don't know the specifics. I was not around it. From ninety four, ninety five, when that study, but the archaeological surveys typically we would do those during. Design, which we never got to because Congress never authorized.
Would the archaeological studies also pertain to your conversations with the tribes as we discussed?
Well, we have to come to a, some sort of a programmatic agreement with the tribes as far as how, how and when we're going to conduct those archaeological surveys. And then what we would do in the event that we find something. Sorry, Brad.
Does, does the tribe currently own any land in the, in the Mahoney Creek Dam?
I don't think any of its tribal.
But you give them veto power.
I, we did not give them. We consulted with them.
And, and because of that and the landowners, I don't know if you guys wrote, wrote off that option.
We took their concerns and looked back at, we looked at our internal policies. Cited that we screwed it up.
Ms. Miller, could I make something clear? So you consulted with the tribes. They were not in favor of the Mahoney Creek Dam option, correct? That does not kill the project, correct? That, I mean, their disapproval does not kill the project.
No.
But you factored that into the larger concern of the Mahoney Creek Dam?
Yes.
And that was where that came in. Okay. Cause that actually was a concern. And a question among the community as to, does the tribe, is it, is the tribe having veto power or not? And it doesn't, but their, their. Feelings upon this do impact what the Corps is recommending. Okay.
Last, last question, Director Bonner. Last question, then I'll be done.
If I could just know with Brad's last question there, um, I had two thoughts to that. One. The, the tribe involvement is a intentional required checkup through the federal processes of the Corps having to follow. Uh, through the historical impacts of a project of magnitude like this. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everybody that it wasn't just something they just decided to give them a call. It's, it's a hard fast requirement that has to be vetted. And although there isn't any, at least not that I know either, tribally owned property within the footprint of the dam site that was proposed thirty years ago. It, it is with tribal boundary formal. So that's, that's why that not only the system Waptenwate is involved in this, but also other tribal. Uh, communities in and around South Dakota in this region, they could have a historical vested interest in a project of this magnitude. The other point I was going to make with, uh, that we've talked about extensively through this process is coming to. An actionable plan that this community could carry out. And I think that's one of the reasons that the Mahoney Dam slid further down the list, at least my perspective, and I think. To some degree, one of the factors in the Corps' perspective too. Knowing what we went through thirty years ago and the obstacles that are just blatantly obvious yet today, thirty years later. Is that a viable actionable plan that could really be carried out? Um, and if we can all sit in a room and agree that that's probably not going to happen. Uh, it definitely makes it less appealing to keep considering it as an option on the table. So. I just wanted to point those couple of factors out to help with. How does the dam, it's been fitting into the discussions. Ms. Johnson?
One last question. I'm going to prelude this by just a short statement.
Prelude away.
So it's kind of our analysis that Sukanafur Road going north. So acts as an artificial dam to the pool. Holding water back in that pool because the pool fills up and then Lake Compeska fills up and then it goes downstream releases. Has the Corps done any analysis of modifying Sukanafur Road to allow water to move. A little more quickly out of that pool of the flow through Watertown? I haven't heard any, any discussion of that. Has there been consideration of that?
Corps, do you know Sukanafur Road?
Do. Okay. We did not look at that and we were significantly faster. Model does account for Sukanafur Road just because the model extends included. Main big river, end of the creek and south creek tributaries. So they're factored into the model, but no. Because it becomes very difficult when relying on a road. Alternatives in the Corps' criteria for exploring these alternatives.
One final, final question. So, and so in essence, you're offering absolutely no flood protection for the lake. Other than modifying it eight inches by letting water out if it exists. At that time of year, you would, you would want to release eight inches. Other than that, there'd be no flood protection.
No, we, I, I realized this after the fact. We should talk, uh, not structural, um, because that is what we're looking at. Um, as a viable alternative, um, for the residents that would be impacted at Lake Compeska. And so we're still, um, looking into, you know, developing that and what that would look like and. Cost of all those things. We're going to get onto that.
Like flood protection.
Any other questions in regard to the Corps' presentation, Council? Uh, Ms. Miller, would you please one more time remind us of the timeline going forward? When will this be coming back to Watertown?
Sure. Uh, we'll see a draft report for your review and comment, um, targeting September ninth.
There'll be our two public meetings associated with that review timeline.
And is there any way for concerned citizens groups to contact the Corps with any concerns? Do you welcome that? Do you not? Uh, is there an avenue for that?
Yeah, uh, you can, you have a couple of different, well, you can. You do have a website for Watertown on the, um, the Corps website. Um, and so there should be a link there that you can submit comments or questions.
Yeah, there's a way for by the, the city to share after as part of the public meeting agenda notes or however my forum is. Having to share about your link of where you can, you know, email us comments or mailing comments. Uh, so I mean, we're always, always taking public comments. Uh, and then there'll be a formidable public comment period. I was looking for the draft report, but. We'll, we'll, we take comments and incorporate it as part of our DVA process throughout the entire survey. We, we can provide that link to make sure you can share with the, the city.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that the public knows because this has been a longstanding big problem in the community and in the region as well. Thank you very much. Don't have to say if you don't want to. He's a golfer, Tom. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just sort of reading. Item B is an approval of a quarter award to Midstates Audio and Video for additional audio and video equipment for the Wells Fargo renovation in the total amount of sixty five thousand dollars. City Manager Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, what you have in front of you tonight is the last piece of the IT. Systems that we need in the new city hall. And we recall that at last meeting, we approved. Um, three hundred twenty nine thousand dollars worth of equipment. This is roughly sixty five thousand, which brings the total to three hundred ninety five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and two cents, which is under. Sparingly, uh, the four hundred thousand dollar budget that is set for audio video and IT components. So, um, we're just asking for approval of this quote. We couldn't wait until next week, but wanted to make sure that we got this order in the same time that we did the other things. Especially some of the items have long wait times. So with that, I and IT Director Boyle are going to try and answer any questions we might have. He likely will be the one answering in detail.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain, uh, I'd like to be the motion for Council for the approval of the. Councilman Jerns seconded by Councilman Peters. Open it up for questions and.
Mayor. Uh, Ben Tupper. Was this planned equipment or was this, I guess, young name getting at it, it wasn't additional because we're under budget on the other.
No, it was additional. Um, I, it's one that I slipped, uh, right. I forgot to add on the last agenda item. So I was just wanting to get it again. So it was a mistake on my part. So just adding it to get the business approval.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Here in that will go to a vote. All those in favor will say aye, oppose say nay. So on the approval for the quarter word, Officer Bob Zane should call it off.
Jerns.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Tupper.
Aye.
Yanforth.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item C, an approval of a bid award for the two thousand and twenty four golf course improvements. Projects number, project number two, four, two, zero to the Creative Vision Landscape and Design in the amount of one hundred and twenty eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. City Manager Mac.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, on May twenty first, we received two bids for the twenty twenty four golf course improvements. Project twenty four, twenty, uh, Creative Vision and Design of Watertown have a gross bid of one hundred twenty eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, this project includes installing a new paper patio, a covered patio and concrete golf turnaround. Uh, you'll see under financial considerations that, uh, this project has been budgeted in the Park and Rec Capital Improvement Fund. The Golf Course Projects Account, the amount two hundred and eighty thousand. And the Clubhouse Improvements Account, the amount forty thousand. As we all are aware, there have been some private dollars that have been raised for this. A little cash on campus, twenty one thousand plus an additional ten thousand from the community foundation. I do believe that there are other items that will be donated, furniture, grill. Something else that I. Be able to tell you. Uh, so with that, I and Roderick, uh, Dusty and Levi are all here, happy to answer any of your questions.
Uh, Jern Krotik, you are. What would, what would your title be? Sid, do you want to say anything right now or just be here to answer questions?
You sure can. It's your pleasure.
Okay. Um, I would like to add something. So I want to apologize for everyone in the room who was concerned about the project, about the banner of last week. On Monday of last week, there were some questions that started coming up. And not all of them had to deal directly with the patio project. They were starting to branch off into other areas of city business as far as how the city does their business. And I started getting concerned that what I viewed as a good project. Was going to get an unnecessary black eye in a public hearing because it was going to branch off. And it would become something that should be positive and it would get less than stellar reviews in the press. I have done this before where I have pulled items that I feared an unnecessarily contentious public meeting. I pulled it from consideration. I stand by that because I want to protect Watertown and I want to protect this. A good project that I want to give it a good hearing. So I made that decision. I made that request to City Manager Mac and Director Rodick. There was very little time for anyone to consider it. I grant that, but I was making a decision in haste at that point. The intent was to protect Watertown. So I hope you at least can appreciate the intent, if not the execution. I knew at that time that with the bid award, we could have at least two more swipes at approving this before the deadline. Because we was, we took it out to bid on May twenty first, so we have until June twenty first. I knew that we had today. Or the regularly scheduled council meeting on June seventeenth. So I knew that we could still get it done. I had then afterwards talked to Director Rodick, Superintendent Pearson, City Manager Mac, and also Mr. Nygaard. Um, about it. So we decided to put it on today. So I just want to say I should have explained it probably better at that time. Or possibly taken it to hearing and then said, I would prefer to have this, have some of the questions answered ahead of time. Or at least not answered ahead of time. It's always better to. Submit questions ahead of time so that staff and other people have time to prepare for the answers and rather than give incomplete. Information at that time. So I will stand by it. I apologize for anyone who was concerned as to the execution of it. But again, I hope that you appreciate the intent. I will take it out for public hearing. However, I first need an action. So Councilman, can I get an approval of the bid award? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. And now, uh, public, if there's anyone here who would like to speak on this item or. Director Rodick, Superintendent Pearson, I just urge, we are looking forward, not necessarily back. Any blame for what happened in the past should rest upon me. Anyone would like to testify? They sure can. All right, Council, questions or comments? Okay, there has to be at least two questions. It is, well, Council, I will say, I think it's unfair to. In this item to not have a single question or comment on it.
I've got a question.
Councilman Jerns.
Uh, in the CIP budget, uh, what has stopped the new clubhouse from being included? In our. Past five, I was told not to go to the past, but the past five, I've been going into the clubhouse for a few years and. I look up and the water's flowing through the ceiling. I'm sure it's been repaired, but it seems to happen. I mean. So my, my concern was small, but why dump in more money on an old clubhouse? I wouldn't do it personally. Why would I do it with government, huh?
So that's a good, a good question. When I got here in twenty twenty one, I believe in that budget year, it was in year five. Um, we were preparing the budget for twenty twenty two and subsequent budgets. It was removed from the five year plan, largely because we only have so many dollars and. We were trying to get through the ICE Arena, City Hall Project, Street Facility, Tenth Avenue. And we'd been given the directive to increase funding for road improvements. So it simply just didn't meet the priority list. Um, as I shared, uh, in an email earlier today, uh, we have a couple of departments, most notably Park and Rec and Public Works, who keep sort of an internal. What I would, ten year CIP. So it's never been forgotten about. It's in the plan so that. When the timing is right, when the dollars are available, it can be put into the five year. Uh, but beyond that, we plan to bring forward, um, probably in August when we. Have our August work sessions and discussions around the CIP and perhaps formalizing that into a ten year versus a five year. So it allows us. To plan longer term. Five years happens pretty quickly. Uh, and also helps us identify where that funding is going to come from. So the clubhouse is in year eight. Uh, it gives that many years, right, to build up funding. Uh, my understanding with this project, and this is probably a better question for Dusty. Dusty, to Dusty or Levi, it's not dumping money into the existing clubhouse. It is creating a space, a patio space. It's not dumping money into the structure of the clubhouse, if you will. It's creating a patio space that regardless of when a new clubhouse is built, would still be used for that, even if the clubhouse is moved to a different location. It provides a great view of the course and all of those things. But there's one part about the green on the side.
If I may, I might ask Levi to come up and kind of describe.
Actually, Levi, Levi, I know this is what we talked about last Wednesday, so come on up.
And, because while I agree, because I had the same reservation, why would we want to, you know, do this, that's to our existing clubhouse, visited with Levi and others, to describe how this would, independent of a clubhouse, how this space would continue to be used into the future, knowledge?
So ten, Superintendent, along with Councilman Jerns' question, I know one question that I have, that I think some members of the public would have, is if, let's say the location of the future clubhouse, when that happens, is not where the footprint is now, is this going to be an unnecessary project? How, how is, how is that factored into your decision-making?
All right. So as, as Scott and I started working on the project, our, our whole goal to run full process was that regardless what happens to the clubhouse, this can stand alone. And, you know, as you talk about, when as you talk about the new clubhouse, so I was here in 2010, and at that time I was told, you'll have a new clubhouse in five years, because they saw the need, the board at that time saw the need in 2010, and we're 2024. Realistically, we're not going to see a new clubhouse in my, in my tenure here. So this is something that the, the membership needs, the golf course needs, the city needs. As you look at a businessman coming to town, and I hear it all the time at the golf course, when you walk in the door there, why would they come there? And we made great strides on the golf course in the last couple of years. I had somebody today that played the golf course today, that came in, and it was Mr. John Hopper, wouldn't mind me telling you his name, said it's as good an house he's ever seen. So, and all of the times that I've been here, I've, I've never pressed for anything structurally. It's always been the golf course needs, and, and push, push aside, and you need internally clubhouse surrounding area. So with what Scott's got, so the golf course in the last couple of years, and the direction that we're going there, it's easy for me to provide an amenity, a very necessary amenity to the membership. So we're doing around $35,000, $40,000 starts a year. And, and even if in eight years, you decide to blow the patio up, the return on investment on that project is far above what you're going to see if we don't do it. So if, if you have $35,000, $40,000 people a year, and you're going to have a new clubhouse in eight years, the math is pretty easy if you have $1 for that person. So we have, and I'll use men's league for example, we have 216 players in men's league. And we talked about this, how many of those people can currently stick around after two dozen events, maybe? Right. So you lose that. You know, we have the, the lake, you know, being right there, we have people coming in all the time off the lake. But there's so many times that they come in, they have no place to go. When we have our Wednesday ladies league, okay, which we have a couple of members up, sit behind me, there's no place for anybody else to go. And Thursday, Thursday morning, senior, same situation, somebody comes in, no place else for them to go. So, you know, this would also provide room for that, not, not to mention as far as outside events, that we have the scoreboards right there. Okay, so, you know, we've got, Scott and I have already been drawing up plans, if the clubhouse would go away. And how could we really create something really fun around that patio, whether it's a putting course, or enhance the putting green, chipmunk facility, you know, there's, there's multiple things that we've looked into, but ultimately, it stays. That, that's our goal in this project, is that that can stay. So whether that answers your question or not, I don't know.
Councilman Jerns?
I'll follow it. I'll go. So based on your experience, based on talking to way more people than most people coming in contact with, in a day, rates for playing annual membership, would they be willing to go up if there was more amenities such as a clubhouse? What, what, what do you view as the, as the demand?
I don't think you look at just an amenity as, as why you would increase the rates. You're going to look at the demographic in, in our region, as far as what that is, not just that single amenity. I, I think you look at the entire facility itself. So just because we would add that, does that mean we're going to increase our rates? No, I would hope they mainly wouldn't have to, because we're going to generate more revenue.
So you believe that, that the sentiment is, don't raise my rates, but let's have clubhouse. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm visualizing this should happen in three years, but I'm only one person.
I'm with you.
Like the game of golf, I, I know what it does for communities. That's why I'm asking. I'm asking about what.
I don't know if we stand the time that it takes to do that. So, you know, as we talked, we started, you know, and using a friend of mine that's also a golf professional, Dean Zonimax, they just did a remodel of their clubhouse, and it took them five years to do a remodel, from a planning stage to the time that they started and finished it. So if we're talking a whole new facility, and we don't even have what that number is in the CIP yet, are we realistic to say eight years? I don't know. We'll see. So I, I wish I could tell you, you know, and if you told me today, you're going to have a new clubhouse in three years, and we'll do a trade? Absolutely. You know, I think that would be great, but I, I would say there's no way.
So back to the question, do you feel that people would want if they had more, such as, or like?
Again, it's more than just more room.
But yeah, I would, yes. No bustards on the floor taking up space, which I get it, yeah.
City Manager Matt, you had something to add?
Well, I would just comment that when we look at the, at the CIP, it really should be looked at at global level from a revenue perspective. So right now, the CIP is funded largely through the second penny. We get, I don't know, about $900,000 bucks a year from the state specifically for. So to your point about raising rates, part of the discussion that needs to be had is revenue as a whole for the CIP, right? Like, do we look at, you know, I think, maybe in 2020, the, the community, the council had a discussion about stormwater utility, right? So you could raise revenue that way, which then takes, takes burden off to 12 fund. Those dollars can go towards park market projects. Right now, the pie is what it is, and with the cost being what they are for everything, the pieces of that pie get shrunk more and more. And now, we had some really healthy years with our sales tax revenue. I think you all have read the reports that CFO Bob Zin has sent out, and while we're still trending above the typical, what was our last percentage, you know, maybe?
Point seven.
Point seven, you know, where the last three years, two years, they've been nine to 12% above the previous years, which has helped us build a pretty healthy, you know, unrestricted cash fund. But we also have internal markers that we try to keep that at. So I do think, yes, a conversation needs to be had globally about rates and fees and revenue as a whole. But I also don't think that we can raise fees enough at the golf course to fund a clubhouse. So there's got to be some balance. I knew you weren't suggesting that. I just, yeah, I just want to make it clear, some people would, would assume that. So, you know, to me, that is part of the larger discussion, and also why a 10-year, you know, looking 10 years out, as officially looking 10, makes so much more sense, because then you really do get to program in, and you can build up those specific reserves. You could say, hey, we want to have a restricted cash account, whereby 2028, we got a couple million bucks in there, and then we're going to go bond, burn out the $2 million to build it, right? So you're buying down those things. There's a lot of things we can do to maneuver the dollars in the right way, and it's, it's all encompassing. It's not just raising fees, but it's putting money aside, it's determining what the priorities, you know, really are, and sticking to that.
I forgot to make a, in just a moment, I forgot to make an announcement that Councilman Beeler has been at, in this meeting online since the beginning. So I apologize to Bruce for not saying, making that clear, but Councilman Beeler has been present, so please mark him present. The other comment that I'd like to make is, I'm going to, I'm going to break my own rule and call you by your first name, Levi, because we've known each other a long time, and I consider you my friend, but you made the comment that you don't think you'll ever see this in your tenure here. You're still a young man. And people are happy with the job you're doing. So I hope that, I know that you, I know that you were hot about this topic, but I hope that you, I hope that you're with us for a long time.
Appreciate that.
You actually will see this comfortably.
That, that wasn't the intent of that, by any means. It was, it was only the, I've, I've heard it for 14 years. That's all. So it's, it's one of those things that, as we discussed, everything that I've tried to do is always for the betterment of the golf course, and for the majority of the membership. You know, I'm in a position out there where I can never please 100% of the people. It's not possible. But if I can please the greater majority, then I'm doing a good job, right? But, but so much of, you know, where you say I was, was hot, was, you know, as we discussed, was, it was just a surprise. It's like another step, we're just pulling rug out from under you. So it has nothing to do with the ever being unhappy with where I'm at, or what's going on there. It's, it was procedure.
And I know that there are two questions from the audience. I hope that you understand, I had a question from Councilman Tupper. So I know Mr. Stout, Mr. Piper. The Piper?
Piper.
Okay. I wanted to make that, but Councilman Tupper?
Levi, if you, if you can satisfy the jury, you're doing a pretty good job, because it's no different sitting on this side of my table. I can't satisfy everybody, but, you know, when we look at CIP, we got a lot of wants and needs. I mean, you can ask anybody here, and sometimes they get tired of hearing me, but we need an east fire station too. But things have to be put in order. And I know the clubhouse has been talked about for probably 15, 20 years. And I'd like to see it put on CIP. It definitely deserves it. But, but to your, but, but the good work you did out there, I'm not even a golfer. I hear about it all the time. Best, best courts I've been in years, people are happy about it. My hat's off to you guys for, for doing your stuff, for what you do. Three years is probably not going to happen, but hopefully before you leave and, and you get your new clubhouse. But you guys deserve it, and, and, but we do have a lot of big things that I'd like to see got done too. So. Thank you, Mayor.
Please announce yourself.
I'm Jim Stout, and I guess, I'm a old guy. I, my first job in city government was planning commission chairman when Betty Bison was mayor.
That's a long time ago.
So, and I was also on the park board, president of the park board and all that. We talked about, and I don't even know the year that was anymore, but we talked about a new clubhouse way back then. And it was, there was a conceptual drawing back then of shutting off the road that goes right through there, and the clubhouse would be moved back to the, what, southwest, back kind of towards the cartshits. And that brings up my content, comments about what we're trying to do now. If that concept was still used, all we'd have to do is hire him, when the new, the contractor, is to put some more papers on the back, and we've had, we'd have a beautiful canopy and seating area with the putting green from here to that wall away. There's no reason that we'd have to let that go to tear it down and start over. Okay? So one other thing, as I travel around, I was over to Clark Saturday and golf in a tournament over there, Ortonville, go to Ortonville. It's a municipal golf course at Ortonville, and many other places. And there's one thing in common, every one of them have a liquor license. Their liquor license, Clark pays for most of the fees for the operation of the course. Ortonville, I mean, you wouldn't believe what it's, I mean, we've all been up there. We know what it's like. And just for your funding, future new clubhouse, we got the worst clubhouse that I've ever been in. I mean, the clubhouse at Clark is better than ours. So we can do better. The course is great. We got, Levi's doing a good job with all the employees in there. The, the golf course looks better than it has for ever. God is, is doing a wonderful job. So the people are in place, but rates, the facility, we can do better. It's, it's an eyesore for Watertown. And I don't know what you have to do, how the city acquires, if it can give itself a liquor license. And I don't drink, by the way. I got a lot of friends that do, but. So just some comments going forward, when man is trying to figure out, and you guys are trying to figure out how to finance them, when it comes to a golf course, all the successful ones have a liquor license. That changes the, the context of what the clubhouse should look like, because you have to have different areas, okay? And those are just comments. I mean, I only live half a block from the golf course now, and I'm over there a lot. And, and we got something going for us, except for the clubhouse facility, not the management, not the kids that are working in there, none of that. We got everything in place. We got a clubhouse that really, really needs some attention. And those are just my comments.
Oh, and before I go to the other comment, I do want to, I know Superintendent Pearson and I actually talked about liquor license, and I mean, we don't, we don't have one now. And when I asked about it, we don't even have space in the current clubhouse defense facility. So it's like, that's obviously something that could be part of the consideration for a future one. And I'm glad that you also mentioned the potential of a road closure, because at the meeting last fall, I know that that was discussed. And of course, that would be a much larger discussion than the patio. And that was one of the things that, it's like, I, I appreciate that you're bringing these up, because they are the larger concerns that have to be in the back of our mind. But I do want to stress that they are in the back of our minds right now. This is, this is one of the reasons why I pulled it last Monday, because those are issues from the back of our mind. In the front of our mind is this particular project, and that's what I wanted to focus upon. So, and then also, as long as Scott is in the back, thank you for coming to Watertown and being here, because...
My pleasure.
I will just say, from when I joined, when I, when I joined, I joined it, I joined it cattail as a member five years ago, I think it was, and that was after taking a couple of years off golf. And the condition of the course is so much better. Mr. Piper?
Yeah, Mayor. My name's Jason Piper. I just wanted to make one comment specific to a price consideration with directly related to the patio. I'm guessing that the, the pricing, the price points for golf at our course operate much the same as they have in the past. I'm guessing that the pricing, the price points per golf at our course operate much the same as they have in the past. A lot of times that relates to regional, I, situations. Each year, it used to be each year Levi or our director would call around to other municipal courses, find out what they charge and we base our course according. Now, it doesn't have to be perfect, but I just thought it'd be absurd. It's just not an arbitrary thing, perpetrate, you know, we're gonna add this and we're gonna, you know, increase rates 10 dollars. There's a, that, and there has been a message that has to put nature in horses, but this is not something, you know, never just grabbed out of the air, back mark, just all of it. But I know when, when Levi came to town, the first thing we asked him to do was put in a point-of-sale system. And I think that was really big. The nice thing that we did is we restructured the contract so that the city took control of the rental cars, which is a lot of money. They're one of the best profit centers in the world. So Levi took a huge price cut when he came to Watertown based on previous management. And what we were able to do with that smarter allocation, that proper allocation of rental cars, we were able to freeze rates for three or four years. So I think we do things smarter, we offer more. It doesn't necessarily have to increase prices. It just offers increased services and the revenue will come. As far as the patio, the thing that I look most forward to with the patio is all the moms and dads that bring their kids up to junior golf will have a place to sit while their kids are participating in junior. Because right now they're sitting in the grass, they're standing up, they're leaning on a tree. Wouldn't it be nice for the 20, 30 adults that bring their kids up for junior golf to have a nice place to sit? Let alone all the other uses. So that's all I, thank you.
And thanks, and thanks for bringing it back to the patio at the end. Cause I, I mean, Councilor Insurance's question was what it was, but again, we're focusing upon the patio as much as we can all acknowledge that the clubhouse is in bad shape. So, but that's not the discussion. We, we, we did need to address that to say it had been factored in. It had been accounted for, but we can't do anything about it right now. So therefore let's move ahead with this project. And then that's what we are discussing. Director Roddick, you had something?
I did, but I forgot it. I, I guess, I guess this is, this is valuable to me hearing some of this discussion because I don't have the history of, you know, and that was brought forth, you know, through other conversations that don't have the history of national road closure or what have it. Having that context, I think, I, and I think these two gentlemen will attest to this. My driving force is the, you know, let's provide the best customer experience we can. Another part of that, yeah, I will agree. We, the clubhouse isn't great. It's still better than the Brookings clubhouse and, and Brook, but. So I will. Besides that one, I would, I would concede it's not great. And that would be part of the, the customer experience moving forward. But I'd be interested more in the history of, you know, road closure, what that, what does that look like, you know, a larger, from my larger perspective? And how to plan through that, you know, and move forward that one. So. But certainly, like I said, the number that's in the, in the CIP, eight years from now or something, is not going to build us a new clubhouse, but it's a place marker at this point until we get better real numbers around that counter. That show. Okay. Thank you.
And then having.
Emmy Reese, I'm the director of the facial waste harmonizers. I have a question about the.
Are you gonna sing your question?
It's, it's in regard to the buckets that you brought up. Every once in a while, when it gets hot, they get these buckets scattered amongst the clubhouse. I, I don't know what that is or why they're there or, does it cost a lot of money to fix that? If it doesn't, seems to me that the patio project provides, would it provide an alternative for people to come order food and not sit next to buckets? It's, seems to be a pretty good alternative. And maybe the buckets are part of the larger problem that isn't going to be easily solved.
Huh?
It's atmosphere.
What do you have in your little pockets?
We'll make sure, okay. We can all acknowledge that a roof that leaks in a golf course is not ideal and we want something better. But again, let's focus upon the patio, which you did, said patio would be a really nice place to sit and an alternative to what we have now. So. Councilman, does anyone want to speak for Councilman Tupper?
The, the idea or the notion, a lot, a lot of very negative, what I would call very, very negative unjustified comments for anybody to think that, I mean, an example, because the one that seems to get thrown into the bus, that, that at the last moment is when I asked any questions, absurd. On April 24th, I started asking questions regarding where we're at in the bigger picture plan. It's funding questions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Sometimes you get an answer that prompts more questions, which is what happens. You have heard more from you tonight than I have at all from anybody in regards to this project. I, as a councilperson, have never had this project presented to us as a council. My first understanding after this ending project was in April. So if the thinking is, is that gee, we know about this the whole time? Hasn't been the case. I can't speak for my fellow councilmembers, but there. So I don't know what I don't know. I do know what I do know. And in this case, those questions came up and my first responsibility is to the budgeting process and people of Watertown. That's where my responsibility go. The credibility, assessment procedures, what caused that? You have a question? Thank you.
So Levi. So no different than, and, and if, if I didn't, I had gone through the process before, which I was very open about throughout the whole process. I had no difficulty in conversation with Mayor Cleveland, I have. Not once. You were out at the golf course just for an event, okay? Mayor, you were out there multiple times, whether it was league play or other times, okay? You've been out to the golf course not once. Did my phone ring? Did anybody ever ask me a question on that project? So if I went through every stage that I was told step by step on how to proceed with this project, and then not once did anybody say, did you call the council members? And I don't feel that that's a, if, if you're putting me in the position that I am and putting Scott in a position he is, and Dusty in the position he is, you're trusting us to make those decisions? And this is me not knowing what your procedure and what your job is, but is, if we followed all those procedures, are you gonna micromanage us to the point where now we're sitting here? Are you gonna trust us and say you're following the budget process? You approved the carryover monies, you approved the course improvement money. But now we're gonna question what you're gonna do with it? That's what I did want. And, and I don't know that, that every one of those things that we're gonna do at the golf course, do I need to call each, if I call each one of you, so be it, I'll do that. But I don't know that that's procedure. If it is, then tell me and that's fine.
So this is, I just want to remind everyone, there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, comment was made, comment was invited. I'm going to go to city manager Mac, but I want to make something clear. This is an example of what I was worried about it getting off topic. And it's hard even after a week of conversation to keep it on topic. So. And, and that's just the nature, especially of this project, because we know it's not, I mean, while it's just a patio, it brings up so many other things that have been lingering for so many years that it's hard to consider adjusting a fan of the project. And I understand that, which was part of my concern. And I would go, city manager Mac, I'd like you to come in and comment on the, on the procedure, on the procedure and process of what would an employee, and I'm not even going to say Superintendent Pearson, because there's been other examples that, you know, what would it, what would it different city employee or any city employee staff do in order to bring something forward? But.
Um, well, Councilman Danforth, Danforth's point, I've been asking questions for a while now and we've been answering them and Dusty's been involved in those answers. Kristen's been involved in those answers. So at any point in time, Levi's supervisor felt like, hey, why don't you just go talk to Kyle? He would have said, hey, why don't you just go talk to Kyle? You know, done that. There's no barrier. But I would not encourage staff to be out whipping votes for particular projects that they feel passionate about, right? Like that erodes the integrity of the processes that we have and gets us back to a more siloed organization, right? When we present things either through the annual operating budget or through the five-year plan, it's after we've gone through a lot of internal work where the clubhouse is a great example and got involved because there were things that as a collective, we said, hey, this is the priority right now. Doesn't mean it's not important. Just here's where the priorities are. And so what I don't want to have happen is we've got staff who feel like they have to go individually sell, you know, a road project, a dam, a playground, a fire truck, you know, because that, that isn't, that's not how we're supposed to be operating. And if there are, you know, things that we need to be doing better, we need to be providing more detailed information, but we can certainly work on that. We put money in the 2024 budget with the assumption that carryover dollars could be used for it as they've been carried over in the past. In the last five years since 2020, only two of those years in the carryover resolutions did they call out specific projects. In 2021, it was for green replacement. And in 2024, it was for the patio and. So my point with that is if you need to see something different, then let's talk about what different looks like. I don't think anyone was potentially super being or, right, to sneak one in. It's just a process that we've, we've followed. And so here we are and happy to provide information as requested.
I'm gonna go Councilman Peters and Councilman Tupper, and then if you still have comments.
Yeah, to talk globally here, but I think my main concern came from the, taking it off the agenda after this went out to bid. It's not fair to contractors to put in all this time and effort to bid a project and for us to say, well, correct, pull it off the agenda for reasons, right or wrong, and not here to debate that. I think that's how we continue to give black eyes to the community. We do all this work, but.
Sorry, I didn't.
No, we do, we, you know, we, we do these projects. They're in the budget. It's our responsibilities to, to bet them. And I have a hard time with pulling that off the agenda after contractors take time because it'll set the precedent when we do take things out to bids, well, they're gonna move forward with it or not. Should I spend time on this or not? Or do we lose our competitive edge? So I just want to make that one. That's where I came from. Underestimated the cattail mafia.
Well, Mayor and I have talked a little bit about procedure and a suggestion I made with it. What do you want is that, you know, in the future, if there are items that may be questionable or there's members of the body that aren't ready to take action on it, you know, leave it on the agenda until you get to that item and then you can folks table it, postpone it if the date's certain, then the body decides, right? And then it's a formal process, but you are the master of ceremony. So everybody, that goes over to you.
But Councilman Peters, I, I hope, not knowing how last Monday would have gone, but knowing some of the questions that were going to be coming forward and not just from one councilman, I figured from the standpoint of Mr. Nygaard, knowing I could wait a week was probably better than just being a no vote. Because that probably would have been even worse on your business. So I, I mean, again, I, I, I said it before, I'll take full responsibility for the action, but. Councilman Tupper?
Well, all due respect for you, Mr. Mayor, I will. At, at the time last week, I was pretty upset that you were taking it up there and when I got more time to sit and think about it, and especially today sitting here, we almost got to that point just a few minutes ago again. You know, and we're all residents of City Watertown. I want what's best for City Watertown. All due respect for Mr. Danforth. I felt I had the information. If he didn't, that was, that was his prerogative. Not, not sitting here trying to criticize it. If we don't like a policy, you guys are following the policy and there's nothing wrong with the carryover. I mean, that's the way we did it in the past. If we don't like the policy as, as a, as a council, then we need to change policies and procedures. That's our job. But to pull it out, you know, we, we need to do our job. So you guys can do your job. We're not here to try to micromanage any department. So try to understand that, that, but I will stand behind the mayor. I'm pulling it off. Like I say, just a couple of minutes ago, it almost got to that point again where it was getting kind of heated. That, that isn't good for anybody. We all leave mad, so.
Yeah, thanks, Reed. I would like to comment. Nancy Turback. I was on the commission that studied our former government. I don't remember now. That was five or six years ago. It was, there was a big group of us. We spent a lot of time. It took it really seriously, interviewed lots of people. And as I recall it, it was a unanimous vote to recommend that we would go to a different form of government. And I think council members, along with the public, and have, have to understand that, that was a significant change. And the, and then it went to public vote and the public overwhelmingly supported it. So I, I didn't ask me to come here and defend him today, but I, but I feel a little like I want to because, you know, 10 or 20 years ago, maybe Levi should have played a Captain May I game and in the front end asked, Captain, may I devise, devise this? But under the current form of government, there's no expectation that anybody would go to the city council first or would, and say, oh, can we, can I divide it? Can I create this plan? And I don't think, you know, you're talking about somebody spending $100,000 or $200,000 and they're supposed to go to the council first. That is not at all what the commission suggested and that's not what the council or the community voted for. So to suggest that somehow he or Dusty or Amanda did anything wrong, I think is forgetting what we're spoke, what we all agreed to on the commission and then on the election. And that was hire professionals and let them do their job.
Great. And I will remind people, we're talking about patio. I, I understand, I understand how it came and, and, you know, didn't, I didn't call you out of order or anything, but I just do want to constantly remind people, we're talking about a patio. Councilman Beeler, you're online. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Reed, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. You know, I, I looked into this. I, unfortunately, I was unable to attend the council meeting last week. Or maybe fortunately I was from some, you know. But no, I think in looking at this thing, I think we followed all the procedures. We budgeted for this. We maybe didn't get into the weeds that far, but that's their discretion. And we need to, we need to trust our, our employees. we need to trust our, our employees, our, our our managers to make the right decisions. And if they had those discretionary funds along with the funds that were budgeted, I think they should be able to make that decision without coming to us. I think that personally, I think that we need to let this happen. I think that this is a good thing, and I think it's a good thing we got some folks out there too that want to donate to this project. So I think we need to move forward, but I don't think that we did anything wrong. I do understand that at times we've had issues where we did not know all the, all the answers, and some of the councilmen may be a little vague on some certain things, or some ambiguity there. I think in those cases, we, we maybe do need to pause, but in this, in this case, from what I understand, I think we followed policy, we followed procedure, and I think we should just, I think we, we're lucky that folks are willing to donate to help us get this thing into fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beeler. And yes, actually, on behalf of the community, for everyone who has donated, raising money, thank you for doing that. That means a lot. I mean, when people are willing to step up and contribute to themselves. I'll take one more comment, then allow council to give the other final comment, but I do also want to say something. I'll go off on my own tangent here. The, the, the form of government, we have to understand where we're coming from, but at the same time, I'm never going to say that council should not be the watchdog over money. Because in the end, that's what the public essentially votes us in for, because where a government spends its money is where its policies are. So whether it's, I mean, I know, I know I've been arguing over items that were far less in monetary amount, I'm thinking of like downtown flowers that are a lot less money, but there's still something that, I'm not going to say you watch the pennies and the dollars will take care of themselves. I'm not going to say that. But I'm also not going to say that any elected official should not have the ability to express concern over any budget item. I mean, we have had questions about vehicle purchases and downtown flowers and all sorts of other things, and it's not that we disbelieve anything, but it's still I think that elected officials have that right to be worried about where the dollars are spent. So it's a fine, it's a fine balance, but that is also part of the give and take of government. Hopefully, in the end, you get good government up against. Any final comments, council? City manager, anyone? Superintendent Turp? All right. The motion is to approve the bid award for the golf course improvement project. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bobzinski, please call the board.
Hey, Jaren? Peters? Pepper? Beeler?
Hi.
Danforth? Colleen? Well, she carries.
Vote to item six eight, future council items right ahead. Do you manage the map?
Hey, Mayor, what you have in front of you is what's planned for the June seventeenth agenda. Should be relatively light. There's several items on there, but a lot of them are just sort of ordinance resolutions. A couple to note, let's see here, let me find it. There is a resolution to update the fee schedule related to fingerprints. And then we will have an ordinance amendment related to down payments to vendors. So it brought may have noticed the last agenda, for the last meeting, excuse me, we had the Ninja system back on the agenda under consent, because they required a down payment, and our current ordinance does not allow for us to do down payments. And so we'll have that for your discussion. Yes.
The door was open, there was too much noise when you started with all that can item, I didn't hear yet.
Oh, the second item that I mentioned was an ordinance amendment related to down payments. Otherwise, oh, and the state and the city address, so your mayor's going to wear a top hat.
Can you bring us line to that, so I can put it on the slide?
Yeah, put it on the slide and then give, give a presentation. So any questions with that? That agenda will go out on Thursday.
Council, any other comments? Man, that's the question. Public comment? There's no one here for public comment.
No, I do have an announcement there. That's okay, I apologize. State Fire School is in town this week. They'll be here Thursday doing the water fights in front of combination plaza, which was a lot of fun last year, so make sure you go. Mayor and I will be welcoming five hundred firefighters. That's a lot of mustaches in place Friday morning, but they'll be here, I don't know, about five hundred, five fifty registered. Hotels are full. They'll be buying a lot of beverages, and it's, it's a fun, fun time in the community, so. Like that.
Great dream. Thank you very much. And I will, the motion for return, the one made by Councilman Pepper and the one from Peter. Any discussion on that, if you're in none, motion is for return. All those in favor, please say aye. You opposed say nay, or if Karen, you guys.
Hi.
Quick updates, quick update on.